Okay, it's time to call the meeting in order. Would everyone please rise, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We may have the roll call, please, Mary.
Yes, sir. Chief Newby.
Here.
Mr. Hagee.
Here.
Mr. Clark. Mr. Depp. Ms. Hairston.
Here.
Ms. Hurd.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Simpson. And Mr. Williamson.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. First item of business is approval of the minutes from February the 5th, 2013 Board Meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and second, and all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We also had a special board meeting on February the 19th, 2013. Need a motion to approve the special board meeting minutes.
So moved.
Sharon, who's second?
I'll second.
Second, Adrian. All in favor of the motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Finance and Personnel Committee report, Adrian Hurd.
The Finance Personnel and the Planning Committees met on February 19th with the Finance Personnel Committee recommending four action items for approval by the Board of Trustees. Action Item Two concerns the post-top finials and cast-iron bases. I do want you to know that I looked up the pronunciation.
I was getting ready to ask you to pronounce that word again, but...
Finial, okay. The purpose of this procurement is to obtain post-top finials and cast-iron bases as a decorative ornament for the Greater Dayton RTA trolley poles situated along Riverview Avenue between Salem Avenue and Main Street. The installation of the base will be on the bottom of the pole and the finial on the top of the pole. The RTA's line crew will perform the installation work. Mr. Gary Robinson presented this action item at our meeting and the supporting documentation is included in today's board package. Gary is also available to answer any questions that the board may have at this time. Based upon the recommendation of the Finance Personnel Committee, I move to award a contract to Wesco Distribution for the post-top finials and cast-iron bases in the amount of $107,094. This procurement is being funded with 80 percent federal grants.
Here we have a motion by Adrian. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Sharon. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Action Item Two is approved.
Action Item Three concerns Fleet Asset Maintenance Management Software System. The RTA desires to replace its current Fleet Asset Maintenance Management Software System, Fleetware, that was implemented in 2004 but is no longer supported by the vendor and has not been updated since 2006. Fleetware supports approximately 340 vehicles, which include diesel and hybrid buses, Project Mobility Buses, electric trolleys, cars, maintenance vehicles and equipment, and other assets such as buildings and bus lifts. The objective is to implement a Fleet Asset Maintenance Management System that tracks maintenance procedures, planned maintenance procedures, timekeeping for 107 employees, inventory, work order management, overtime, and vehicle in-service breakdown. The new system will interface with several existing systems. Mr. Hank Trimble and Mr. Gary Smith presented this action item at our meeting and the supporting documentation is included in our board package. Hank and Gary are available to answer any questions the board may have at this time. Based upon the recommendation of the Finance and Personnel Committee, I move to award a contract to Trapeze Software Group Incorporated in the not-to-exceed amount of $498,980 for the purchase of Trapeze Software Group's Enterprise Asset Management, or EAM, system; $249,500 for a five-year maintenance agreement; and up to $11,000 for the optional mobile solution software; and up to $35,000 for the purchase of hardware, for a grand total not to exceed $794,480. This procurement is being funded with 80 percent federal grants.
Okay, a motion by Adrian. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Janet. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Action Item Three is approved.
Action Item Number Four concerns transit advertising. The purpose of this procurement is to contract with the firm to place approved advertising materials on the exterior and interior of Greater Dayton RTA buses, printed materials, and facilities. The successful firm is expected to continue the growth of RTA's advertising services program by maximizing advertising revenues paid to RTA. The firm is also expected to assist RTA with advertising and promoting its programs and services, and to assist nonprofit and community organizations and institutions with public service advertising when unsold space is available. Mr. Frank Eckler presented this action item at our meeting and the supporting documentation is included in our board package. Frank is available to answer any questions the board may have at this time. Based upon the recommendation of the Finance and Personnel Committee, I move to approve a contract to commuter advertising for three years with two one-year option periods for transit advertising print.
Okay, a motion by Adrian. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Sharon. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Action Item Four is approved.
Chief, can I make a comment? I didn't want to interrupt the action item, but there's only a couple of board members, I think, that remember when commuter advertising first came to Dayton, because we've had some turnover. And I remember we were all a little bit concerned about this fledgling little startup firm with these two young people from out of town, and well, now they're residents of town. And the company's growing, and it's really great to see. I think it's a great Dayton success story, and we're pretty happy to continue being a part of that. And we know we have two of the representatives out in the audience today, and we're pleased to see that continue on.
They have done an excellent job. I'm one of the people, of course, that was here when they first came to town, and we do appreciate all the work that you've done. For one of the people who voted to get rid of all advertising on buses under the old system, you know, they went down the street, it looked like a billboard on wheels rather than a bus, and the manner in which it's held, handled today, you know, to where it's not so obtrusive, and yet you're able to get your message out, and it works out well for both of us. So thank you very much for all that you've done.
Action Item Five concerns legal services. Proposals were received for legal services for general and corporate affairs, labor workers' compensation, EEO, miscellaneous litigation and settlement. Mr. Gene Rose presented this action item at our meeting and supporting documentation is included in your board package. Gene is available to answer any questions the board may have at this time. Based upon the recommendation of the Finance Personnel Committee, I move to approve two contracts. The first contract is to Baker &amp; Hostetler for a primary counsel for labor and workers' compensation, with year one, an hourly rate of 215; year two and three, an hourly rate of 225; and option years four and five for $235. The second contract is to Cooper Gentile Washington &amp; Meyer, years one, for a primary counsel for general and corporate affairs, EEO and miscellaneous associate counsel for labor and workers' compensation. Years one and two, an hourly rate of 175; year three, 185; and option years four and five is 200. And my motion includes both contracts.
Okay, a motion by Adrian to approve Action Item Number Five. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Franz. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Action Item Five is approved. I believe you have a report.
I have a few discussion items. First was the December 2012 financial statements pre-audit. Mr. Robert Thomas reported that revenues and expenses were down slightly from the budget for the month of December, but for the year, our bottom-line budgeted amounts have been exceeded. Non-operating revenue was down slightly in December due to adjusting our investments to market value. Capitalized wages were a positive this year, and at the meeting, there was an inquiry regarding the estimated liability we may realize due to a possible labor contract retroactive raise increase from April 2012, and Mr. Donaghy stated that the amount would be approximately $300,000. Our January 2013 financial statements, Mr. Thomas reported that there was a slight increase in ridership and revenue for the month of January 2013. There were positive variances to budget in all expense categories, helping January's net loss to be better than budgeted. November 2012 sales tax update. Our November 2012 sales tax receipts to be received in February of 2013 were up 0.6 percent from last year, making year-to-date November 2012 up 3 percent from the same point in 2011. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, we're going to the Planning Committee. Chair of the Planning Committee, Janet Jones.
Thank you. The Finance Personnel and Planning Committees met on February 19th, and although the Planning Committee, we have no action items to present, we do have a couple of updates to provide. Mr. Eckler provided a presentation on the concept of smart card technology and its possible use for customers riding the RTA system. Currently, some members from the RTA Customer Advocacy Group and RTA staff members are testing the smart cards on RTA fixed route buses. Mr. Eckler will also be presenting the smart card information at today's meeting, and future reports will be provided on this test, as the tests progress. Ms. Pritchard also, of the Marketing Department, also provided an update on the 2013 schedule for marketing and promotion outreach events. Ms. Pritchard also discussed current efforts to develop a newly revised customer newsletter. And this concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. If there are any questions, we'll be glad to answer.
Any questions for Janet? Was Frank going to make a presentation now, or...
It could be pleasure, pleasure.
Let's not give him an option. We would love for Frank to make his presentation.
Good afternoon, everyone. I know some of you have seen this presentation before. I know many in the audience have not, and of course, the general public who are watching. But we feel it's an interesting subject, and we certainly want to share this with the public as far as what we are testing right now on our buses. And it's the concept of smart card technology. Quite frankly, what a smart card does on a transit vehicle is simply like a tap-and-go concept, where you can preload a value on the particular card, and much like a pass that you use to access a door in a building where you put it up against a particular bullseye, in our case, the fare box, it allows access to our vehicles. Having this preloaded value certainly can be beneficial for our customers rather than dealing with the need to have cash all the time. So that's one of the benefits that we're looking at with the smart card technology. Obviously, I had mentioned the cost of handling the cash from time standpoint, but also the handling of it here at the RTA. We're looking for ways to make it more seamless, where there's less cash handling, not only at the bus level, but also within the RTA finance area as well. Paper transfers, we discussed that is an issue as well that we certainly would like to reduce. The smart card technology does give us the opportunity to not require a paper transfer when writing the RTA services, and transfers within our fare boxes and the paper within them is one of our issues that we have when it comes to having to deal with road calls on our buses with a lot of the paper within our fare boxes. So if we can reduce that with smart cards, certainly a benefit. And then I mentioned the tap-and-go function, and I'll show a photo here. We have a bullseye on our fare boxes that simply you tap that bullseye with a preloaded card. It automatically allows you to board as long as you have the proper value on that particular card. It certainly will help speed up the boarding process, and from a scheduling and on-time performance standpoint, that's very important, not only to us, but our riders as well. And the future, there's possible expansion with these smart cards that could act down the road as part of a debit card system that could be used at other retail outlets as well, not only for the RTA services. So a lot of potential with the smart card technology. Just a few other things. We're looking at the ability to upload values to these cards from your home or office, not always having to come to an RTA sales outlet, but being able to do this from your home or office certainly would be a benefit for our customers. And potentially in the future, this could offer seamless travel between transit systems. For instance, in the Seattle area, there are seven systems in Northwest Washington that, the Orca Card is what it's called, is used to transfer between the variety of systems that exist out there. Obviously, these passes would have a serial number, so we can certainly control if there's a lost pass or a pass that is stolen. If we have that serial number on file, we can certainly deactivate, so there's a security measure there that certainly is a benefit to having the smart card. And from a marketing standpoint and promotions, we do have the potential ability to maybe implement a frequent flyer program, where we could keep track of how often folks use the system. So there's a lot of potential with this particular technology interacting with our customers. Some challenges, certainly, these are the things we have to vet, and we do have a team internally who is looking at this particular technology. There is a banking system that certainly needs to be established to handle our online transactions. That's a very important part of this. Hardware and software improvements, definitely a necessity. We received feedback at our committee meeting from a Project Mobility rider about the possibility of those types of systems on paratransit vans, which makes sense. It's a single fare. Instead of the tickets that we provide to our customers, these smart cards, preloaded with value on them, certainly could be a benefit for our customers and our drivers. Educating our riders is a whole new system, a new way of doing business, certainly an important challenge that we need to make sure that we're very clear with our customers on this particular system and its benefits. Obviously, mitigation of fraud, we need to make sure that there are systems in place so there is no issue as far as people who are claiming they have preloaded a card and did not, which you do find sometimes that will occur. And then the world of cash. This society, more and more, we are not necessarily becoming cashless, but it seems to be a trend that we really need to embrace to find out ways that can reduce the need for people to carry cash and the handling of it here at the RTA. And then convenient locations for reloading. If we're really looking at a system that's going to be effectively utilized, we want to make sure it's not just one or two locations that you have to go. We want to make sure that it's convenient for you to reload value on these cards. Quite simply, just a photo here, this is our test card, nothing glamorous. Right now, we're calling it the iRide card. Certainly, that may not be the official name, but as I mentioned, the bullseye on the fare boxes, they're there now, and it's simply a tap-and-go technology, where you just tap it at the bullseye and board the bus. And with our test group that we have out there right now, so far, so good. We're getting some pretty good feedback that the cards are working well. One of the things I did want to mention since our committee meeting, we want to improve the feedback customers are seeing from the fare boxes itself. This is what the driver will see, and this is just simply a particular card that has a stored value, and it shows, for instance, it had $44.75. The fare of $1.75 was utilized when they tapped onto the bus. Now their balance is $43. That's the feedback that the driver sees, and this is good feedback on the fare box for our customers. This is just another example of a discounted fare, where it was $41.50, 85 cents was utilized down to $40.65. This particular area for our customers, we're finding with our monthly passes, we want to make sure that there's a mechanism that gives customers an indication of when it expires. That's currently not there. Just a simple thing, but during this test, we're finding that's some feedback that we'd like to make sure is addressed in the future. Next steps, going to work with our TVM machines, because this group that's out there, we want to do some reloading with these cards, work through that particular process at the TVM machine level so we can reload them. We do have transit agencies, smaller ones like Lansing, Jacksonville. Seattle, obviously, is a large one, but Tucson is another one that's venturing into this. A lot of the smart card technology's typically been with the larger systems, both nationally and internationally. We're seeing them move more and more into smaller systems, medium-sized systems such as Dayton. The test group is already deployed, as I mentioned. They're out there testing these right now, and each time they ride, they go to our website link, and Sabrina and her crew have filled out a nice, simple feedback form that they fill out, the route they rode, the direction, information that we'd like to have so we can keep track of what their experience is like, plus be able to track it back to our fare boxes, which is something we want to make sure that we keep track of, and then continue to identify issues of concerns during this test. And I mentioned a few things we're seeing on the fare boxes we'd like to see improved. So we continue to monitor this system, and we'll be providing feedback in the future on it. And just simply, just the process, as I mentioned before, we've shared this with our operators downstairs, at the operators' area and out on the street, to let them know about this process, and they have been given this particular diagram as well, that I've talked about earlier, with examples of what they will see on their screens, both regular fare and a reduced fare concept. So, so far, so good, and we'll keep you in the loop on how things are going with this testing process. And that's all I have on smart card. Any questions?
Frank, a question I forgot to ask at the committee meeting. If we were to change to a smart card system, what would the casual user of our bus do? Will he still be able to pay cash on a bus?
They certainly can. Our goal is to make this as convenient as possible, where we can reduce that need or desire to use cash, if at all possible. It'll still be an option, because we understand that is an option people use day-to-day, but our goal is to put a dent as much as possible in that cash usage, to make it convenient for customers, and to make our boarding times much quicker for them on our fixed route fleet.
Don't be surprised to hear us want to have a session probably at the joint committee meetings, where we openly discuss the possibilities there. When you think about all the smart card can do, it can have a fixed amount of rides, it can have a monthly or weekly pass, or it can have a cash value. Mary would support me if I said, and Robert would too, cash is a real challenge for us to handle. And one of the things I've thrown out there is perhaps we would even want to consider discounting a cash fare paid by a smart card, to help us in that way encourage people, less and less to use cash, and more and more migrate to this card for their needs. And I think we could get to the point where cash would be just the absolute last resort for a customer. We'll probably always have to have an option for that, but that would be our goal, because that's one of the, you know, we have a certain day of the week where it takes sometimes half a dozen Robert people to get through, you know, handling of the cash. So it's a cumbersome thing for us, and obviously, the more we can do in this way, those cards are so flexible, and so far, this one has addressed, you know, I've been preaching for years that I want smart cards, but I don't want semi-smart, I don't want dumb cards, I want smart cards. And in some cities, they ran out to be the first to do it, and as my daughter would say, "Well, this is a dumb card, you know, I can't get a monthly pass," and real users of transit typically want the monthly pass or the weekly pass. It looks like we have that down. If we get the bugs out of this, we'll want to have an open discussion, because that might alter our fare structure, which would require public hearings, and we'll want a lot more input, but the potential is great across the board, whether it's Project Mobility or on fixed route.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I know where it gets through.
Well, excuse me. Are there questions for the board members? I'm sorry, I can't take things from the audience, because otherwise, anybody could. It's not that... Any other questions from the board members? Is that it, Janet?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Janet. Thank you, Frank. Okay, moving on, Executive Director's Report. Mark.
Thank you, Chief. Just a few items. You know, last month, we had a historic procurement that was awarded. Deborah looks so relaxed at this point, which in theory could be the largest procurement in our history. Wanted you to know that's moving along. We managed to iron out one of the wrinkles, which was a financing issue between the partners who will produce the bus, which is Voslaw and our friends at Gilig. I was the mediator on that one, and I think we have it worked out, where there won't be any additional costs associated with that. And now comes the fun part. We start moving into how soon can we get vehicles online at Gilig and prepared to be shipped to the next level of manufacturer, where the electronics are applied. So we're super excited about the project, and we will be reporting back to you regularly, especially once we have our little internal group that's going to honcho the benefit-cost analysis on that. And it's funny, the people in the business I've talked in, people around town that have heard about it, people are excited about, you know, this vehicle, so this is, again, going to be probably the most fun project we've had in a long time, and I'm pretty excited about it, obviously. State budget, you've been reading a little bit about that in the paper. From the ODOT perspective, I think, you know, we're pretty much of the opinion that we will see the status quo in terms of funds that flow to us. You will recall from last year that we no longer get really any general revenue fund dollars. Those are going to the more rural systems, and at this point, see, it's making Mary sneeze, the whole thought of the state budget. It's a CFO thing, I guess. But we will still get some dollars, which will be used in our capital budget from the state, and we certainly encourage that. The state association, we continue to push the idea of ODOT, to look at it from a different perspective. If capital only is to be it, we want them to focus on state-of-good repair, same thing that's happening at the federal level, and take an approach to basically commit to funding a certain level of bus replacement needs over a period of the budget. That one's a little tougher sell, but we continue to push that, and hopefully, we'll get there. Lot of debate about the governor's sales tax proposal, which most of us were caught off-guard with. I can tell you, and I forwarded something by email earlier today, we are working very closely with the County Commissioners Association of Ohio, because they're obviously the other great affected group, maybe more so than transit. But my guess is, when you read their draft position, that we'll likely align ourselves with that position for now, until we see a lot more detail coming out. You know, the thought of expanding the amount of revenue we get, absolutely wonderful, but as always, the devil's in the details. We'll stay abreast of that, and the folks in Columbus are going to make sure that when we need to be, we'll be in Columbus to be at the right hearings and make the right testimony. From there, I'll go to the federal budget and sequestration. And you may be surprised to learn that we don't expect any impact on our organization from sequestration, even though the Federal Transit Administration will see some. About 80 percent of the money federal transit receives is from the Highway Trust Fund, and it's exempt from sequestration. Now, there are some general fund dollars that flow to FTA to basically fully fund the authorization under MAP 21. Those funds are subject, they will be cut, but the anticipation is the cuts will occur. They'll be limited to FTA's administration, which could be a challenge for us to some degree. Discretionary grant programs, there are very few of those left, and New Starts, which is really the rail program for new rail projects and research. So people don't like to see that happen, but we believe that's where the limits of the current sequestration will go. So more to come on that. Anthony and I will be going to DC soon to fix all the problems of the world, I guess, if we can get that... if we can get that done. If not, we'll just try to get back safely. And beyond that, I would like to just welcome back Mr. RTA, Scott Meese, who's been missing in action for a while, not of his own doing, but it's great to see Scott back out and about, and welcome, Scott. Other than that, I'm open to questions at the board.
Any questions for Mark? Okay. Thank you. Old business, I have none. New business, I have none either. Do you have any new business, Mark?
No, sir.
Public comments, we had one person sign up that wished to speak. Carter Pitzinger. Have you spoke here before, ma'am?
Yeah.
Okay. You probably recall, then, you have three minutes. After you give your name and address, the green light will come on. After two and a half minutes, the yellow light will come on indicating you have 30 seconds left. In order to treat everybody equally, we have to hold everybody that three-minute time limit. So, with that, you may begin.
Okay. My name's Carter Pitzinger. I'm with Community Action Partnership Advocate Education Committee and a couple other coalitions to reduce poverty. First of all, I want to mention, we're having an event here, Women's International Day, this Friday at Stewart and Main Street, and I'd like to invite everybody to attend here. It's being held in solidarity with Community Action Partnership Occupy Dayton, Putting People First, which is a coalition statewide to reduce poverty about labor rights, legal aid. State Hurdle is part of it. Jean Casement from the University of Dayton. And we're on Facebook. It starts at 10 o'clock at Community Action Partnership, and we'll march to Stewart and Main where if someone doesn't have much time, they can meet us there, and we'll have speakers and chants, and it's to show solidarity for the plight of women, to support international women's rights today, and the state federal budget cuts here as well. And the second thing is, I had my question answered by Mr. Napier here about the assault that happened on December 19th where my partner was, just all of a sudden, a group of boys started beating him up. And there was a hearing on March 7th, but Mr. Napier asked the question if they were trespassing. And I had a concern because my daughter went to Doma High School. There are two football players, and if you can have an assault charge and still be a football player. But my most question was, why did they do this? You know, to me, I feel it was a hate crime, and I'm always advocating for the safety and students. They're great, they're respectful on the bus and everything, so it just really hurts me in expected, you know, my partner. He had five stations in his head. He had the laceration, and he bruises on his neck and things, and so he's been paranoid riding the bus since then. So, now that, you know, he has a bit more information that they're not supposed to ride the bus, that's really where he believes me and my partner. But I want to really advocate, be aware, the school does not have any parent-teacher engagement kind of thing at Doma High School, and last year, city length, new building, you know, there's less fighting. Because there was fights there every day. My daughter went there in 2008. I picked her up at the office. There was one, there would be either a girl or a boy at the office, there would be one fight, at least once a day. So, I was really happy last year when they said everything's on five. I don't want any more of that. I didn't want...
Your time's up. Thank you very much. The, I saw you speak, if I'm not mistaken, with Jim Napier prior to the meeting.
Pardon?
Did you speak with Jim Napier prior to the meeting?
Yeah. I had trouble almost getting a hold of him, so I'm a little busy at the moment, but he told me that he's been very busy and that they do have a right. I thought they might have, you guys might have to wait until after the hearing, you know, your instance to prove him guilty, but he said, "No, no, no, they have trespassed wrong."
Okay. Will you be available at the meeting? Jim, if she needs any more information, he will be available after the meeting as well. So, thank you very much for coming in and bringing your concerns to us. Thank you. Okay. That was it to sign up. We do have a need for an executive session today.
Okay. In that regard...
You want to introduce that?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. In that regard, pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 1.22, I move that the board convene into the executive session to have a conference with our attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject of pending or imminent court action.
Okay. A motion by Franz from the executive session. Second by Adrian. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Hoagy?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Chief Newby?
Yes.
And Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We will be reconvening out here. There may or may not be one more item, and that would be the conclusion of the meeting. So, it's up to individual people where they wish to remain while we go into executive session. Could I have a motion, please, to go back into public session?
Some move.
Second.
Sharon, Franz, all in favor? Whoops, sorry, we need a roll call on it, please.
Yes, sir. Ms. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Hoagy?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Chief Newby?
Yes.
And Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We do have one more item to bring before the board, and I believe it's going to be introduced by Adrian Hurd.
Okay. I would move that we accept Ms. Raquel Mitchell's offer of settlement pending claims in state court administrative proceedings and pending arbitrations, and attempt to negotiate an acceptable settlement agreement that would be in the best interest of RTA, up to $40,000.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Franz. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Any final comments by board members? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Sharon?
Second.
Seconded by Franz. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.